I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2018, School Board Meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM, speaking on a couple of personnel matters, negotiations, and another legal matter. Participation in government, students, if you, if any of you are here, I assume some of you are, okay, you need to stay until 9:00 or until the meeting ends, whichever comes first. And there are signup sheets in the front here for you to sign, and any board member will sign your agenda too, if you have one of those forms. Okay, would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's some introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Charmaine Midasinger.
Jody Monroe.
Lynn Lenhart.
Michael Cooper.
Meredith Moriarty.
Judy Keough.
You've read minutes of the December 20th School Board Meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additions, corrections? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Student Senate report, is there someone here representing the Student Senate? Moving on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So not much to report on after the vacation. The Governor did give his State of the State address today, I don't know if anyone saw that, but we'll be looking for the next, shortly, what that looks like for our education and our budget as we begin to prepare for that, so we'll keep people apprised of that. And I just wanted to let the Board know that we did send in the, the letter to, what's the company?
Forefront Power.
Forefront Power for the solar purchase agreement to, so that we could have further discussions with them about pilot agreements. So that will give us the 60-day, 60-day window.
We responded within the 60 days.
Right. So that was sent in yesterday. Okay. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Have, have we been getting a good response to the strategic planning survey that went out?
Yes, we actually were hoping to conclude it the week prior to break, but because of the snow day, some of the students didn't have time to, to finish that, so we extended that for the students this week. But we have a large return on that, so we should have some good, good survey results to share with the committee and the Board in the next couple of weeks. But yeah, we got a great return.
I think, would that be at the, part of that would be on the Board Retreat, I know that's on the agenda for the.
So well, yeah, so we will talk a little bit about some of the initial survey results at the Board Retreat, and then we have a Planning Committee meeting on January 24th to discuss that with the larger group to look at next steps. We probably have close to 1,000 responses right now.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Report, does anybody have anything they want to share with the Board? I know it's been vacation break, so, okay. And I know there was recused if we needed any tickets for the middle school play at the end of January. Brittany was taking the numbers of anybody interested in attending.
Oh, I, I was gonna ask Brittany, I forgot to ask her. But, okay.
Okay, next item is the presentation on our Career and Technical Education Program. And, Dave is doing it?
Yep.
Okay. Dave Demel, Principal.
bit about our high school program. I know the cat's out of the bag here, we put down CTE, but I was going to introduce this as our best kept, our best-kept secret at BCHS. Tonight I will be highlighting our students who participate in career and technical education at Albany Boses. I referenced the program as our best-kept secret, and I'm determined to change that in our building and in our community. Our programs, the students who participate in career and technical education are amongst the most creative and talented students in the school. Students who participate in the CTE program receive certificates from Albany Boses and a New York State Bethlehem High School diploma at graduation, which is quite an accomplishment. Students take coursework and earn certificates in the culinary arts, building trades, auto, healthcare, and HVAC, to name a few. BCHS students are able to enroll in CTE programs during their junior and senior years. During my time at BCHS, I've seen students' self-confidence and love of learning explode due to their involvement in such programs. Students are able to find their strengths and explore their passions. According to Tim Hodges, Director of Research for Gallup's Education Practice, while the national graduation rates have inched up in recent years, students with a concentration in CTE are nearly 15 percentage points more likely to graduate high school than the national average. Many students transfer their education into careers. Many of the careers are essential to our communities. Ask anyone who is at the four corners coming out of the Perfect Blend. They may be ordering a cake for a celebration, getting lunch for their office staff, or just picking up a coffee to start their day. Either way, it is safe to say many of us in the Bethlehem community rely on their services on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. Dan Casey, co-owner of Perfect Blend and Twisted Vine, is a CTE grad. If you pay close attention to trending careers in economists, you're aware of the great need of human capital in our country. We have heard time and time again that there are jobs, but employers can't find qualified individuals. Students leaving CTE are career-ready and have a leg up on their peers. One common misconception is that they characterize CTE as a track for students who are like less, less likely to attend college. On the contrary, many students attending CTE are college-ready and continue their education at two or four-year college while having the skills necessary to obtain, while having the skills necessary to start a career. The knowledge and skills our students obtain while attending the programs at Boses are an investment in our future. Like I said earlier, I no longer want career and technical education at Boses to be the best-kept secret. I want everyone to know how talented, creative, and career-ready our students are who complete CTE programs. I hope this video will give you some insight on our incredible students and the work they are doing on a daily basis. I would like to thank the students who volunteered, Dan Casey, Joelle Gardner and Hannah Teal, and Justin Cortez from Boses, who helped put the video together.
What do you think of when you hear, what do you think of when you hear Boses, CTE, or even VOTEC from a parent or guidance counselor? This is what I think of. Bethlehem students are electrifying their future at Capital Region Boses Career and Technical School, receiving a CTE education that looks ahead while preparing students for the real world and the needs of now, and finding a path for their future through hands-on experience.
My mom has always had me cooking in the house, like making Thanksgiving dinner. When I hit sophomore year, and I found out that I could do culinary, I just talked about it, and I said, "Yeah, sure, I can do it."
My family business basically runs on like mechanics and everything, and I really wanted to know how to like paint cars and repair them.
My mom suggested it to me first, and then my counselor kind of supported it. I mean, like it's more hands-on, so you just don't sit in class for 45 minutes, you actually like get up and build things.
I like working with mechanics and stuff on cars, stuff for ultimate business, I figure I'll own my own business eventually.
My academics, it was taking me a little longer to kind of pick up on things. I knew if I could get my hands involved more, that's where my strong ability was.
What's a career in tech student look like? That's an easy question. They look like us. They look like dreamers, innovators, and challenge seekers. Our students enter college better-prepared, or they jump directly to the job market with the skills they need to succeed.
People would tell me that like VOTEC was the guy that really helped me, I should just get a job in a restaurant, which I do, I do have a job in a restaurant. Also calling the CTE allows me to learn stuff that I wouldn't learn in the field. I've learned like actual life skills. Now that I'm getting scholarships, I'm going into like doing things I love to do. I want cooking when I become older, like graduating from college, I want to own my own restaurant.
All the people in this class, they've told me they plan on going to college, so I don't get where people get the idea that kids who go to VOTEC don't go to college.
Also, VOTEC was really great on a transcript too, saying that like, "You're licensed to do this," or "You're licensed to do that," or "You're certified in this," or "You're certified in that."
Our CTE students are pursuing a passion, creating their future, a future filled with technology, excitement, drive, knowledge, and the hands-on work they desire. Career in tech is about doing more, expecting more, achieving more, and it's about earning more than just a diploma.
Listen, here's a really good opportunity to get ahead of the game. When I got into class, I felt like comfortable, wow, this is on fire.
If you wanna like go and find your passion and start early and actually learn what you wanna do for a living, at a young age, instead of waiting until like you actually have to leave high school and pursue it in college, then CTE is where you gotta go.
Well, if you're thinking about doing VOTEC, you should just do it. You shouldn't even wait, you should get right in there as soon as you can, because it's a really good opportunity.
Get out and learn something new. You could learn something that could eventually lead to a job or a career you want to be in.
So like I said, I thanked everybody that was involved in that, it was a great video, gives you some insight as to what they're doing over there, and the excitement and the pride they have in their work. I'm lucky enough to have with me Anna Clark, who is in the Criminal Justice Program, and she's brave enough to come up here and talk to you and answer any questions you have. I gave her three basic questions. They were, why were you interested in CTE? What has CTE done for you as a student? And what are your plans after you graduate? So I'm gonna let her read that to you, so you can get some insight and, and learn about Anna, and then she'll answer questions you might have.
So, the first question was, why were you interested in CTE? Well, it was fun. It was more hands-on. I could learn more about law enforcement. I could also meet new friends from different places like Schenectady, and Colony, and Plus it gets me out of the building, I'm not stuck here in Bethlehem for six hours. I get actually go places. Two, what has CTE done for you as a student? Well, it helped me understand law enforcement more. It created more of an interest in law enforcement and made me want to do it more. And three, what are your plans after you graduate? Well, I'm planning to do college for two years and military, for the military police. So.
So that's the point, do we have any questions? Do you guys have any questions for Anna?
Anyone have any questions?
Anna, I just wanted to know what your, like, day-to-day schedule looks like. Do you come to Bethlehem first and then go to your program, or what's your schedule like?
I come here to Bethlehem, sign into homeroom, and then when the bus gets here, we all get on, and around 7:35-ish, we, we start to head out, we're there by like 8:05. I get there, and we're on path, we take our binders out and get going from there.
And what time do you come back for your, rest of your classes?
We get back on the bus at 10:25, and then we, that usually gives us around 10:55, so right around when fifth period, or fourth period ends and fifth period starts.
And what classes do you take then, here? English and?
I have, for this semester, I just have economics and PE, but for next semester, I have law and life, economics, pigs, and PE.
Can you share one or two things that you've done in your placements that relates to law and for, I think you were handcuffing someone up there.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that was true, but, so what kind of things have you done?
Well, like in the video, I do like handcuffing. We do patrol. A couple of times, we had directors and people that not around like Schenectady, Bethlehem area, come to the Boses up in Colony, and they don't know where they're going, so we would stand outside, even in the freezing cold, and direct them on where to go, and help them out, and kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Hey, Anna, I hate to make you walk up again, but you're, please want to give you a little eagle pin for participating. It's sometimes hard to come and speak in front of a group, so appreciate your doing that.
Maybe have a, can I have a picture with you, Lynn, or for you? Hannah, that's okay.
Thank you, Anna. Providing our students with the opportunities to explore their passion and strength is aligned with the values of our district. I thank you for supporting the participation of our students in the CTE programs and allowing me to share their amazing work with you here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Dave, I have a question. Do students go to their counselors and, and indicate interest in programs, or do counselors suggest to some students that this would be?
Yes, so this is a conversation that starts as early as ninth grade, where counselors are exploring interests. They're looking to see if, if students want to explore even going on a visit. We take students for visits to the campus before their junior year, because some students are kind of on the fence, you know, it's a hard thing to do, to go get in a bus, go all the way there, come back, and still balance everything. So they have to be really invested in it, and a lot of times, the visit to the campus for them to see what they're gonna be doing in their program is, is really the catch. So, but this does start from ninth grade, where counselors are trying to identify interests, and then if that's a match for a program at CTE, you know, they look to explore it further.
Are there other programs that were not represented in the video?
Yeah, there's, there's tons of them. So if, if you went on the Albany Boses website, they have an extraordinary long list, and it's growing, and, and the trend is, is moving in that direction, where not only career and tech vocational for high school students, but post-secondary, the two-year colleges, it's, it's only growing and expanding. That's really, there's a couple of reasons why I chose this tonight. One, obviously, the students, I'm very proud of what they do over there. Two, I think it's very important for our country even to fill these, these skilled positions, and the knowledge that they're getting over there is of need to us, and, and it's a growing trend. And so I, I wanted to try to break, there's a, there's a stigma in the sense where if you go to, if you go to VOTEC, CTE, Boses, whatever you want to call it, that, that you're not necessarily, you know, a student that's driven, and that's completely, that's absurd, that's, that's out, out of whack, and I want to get it back aligned with, with what it really is. It's necessary. And I think a couple of those quotes up there, you saw on one of the slides, there's a real need for it, and so by promoting these students and letting them know that we are proud of them, and they're doing great things over there, I'm hoping it encourages even more students to go in that direction, if they are interested.
Some do require higher, higher abilities. I know the auto repair program, the manuals that are used in doing automobile repair are actually at a higher reading level than our high school.
Yes.
Reading courses are.
Yes.
And so students, I mean, it's not easy, it's not.
No.
However, the success after you complete can be, can be great.
What you're also saying is it takes even added levels of maturity and responsibility to be able to make the balance, to do the traveling, to, to balance multiple worlds.
Right.
I have a question for you, don't the culinary students, do they do a dinner if the Boses, or I think there was something?
It's the annual, annual, at the annual meeting.
The annual Boses meeting.
So if you get the invitation, because we all get invitations, they, culinary students prepare the dinner, so.
They do a phenomenal job.
Great job, yeah.
And this is, this is near and dear to my heart, as I, when I started out my career, for, for two years while I was going to grad school, I worked in a culinary classroom as a teacher's aide, and tremendous value in, in what's going on in the vocational setting.
I just want to thank you for spotlighting this program, because I've always thought that CTE is a phenomenal program, and for students who are, you know, not conventional learners, it's a great opportunity for them to find their path in life and, and use their skills, and the more we can provide them with those opportunities, I, I think it's great that we can do that. So I think, you know, if we can explore more of those opportunities, we should.
Especially as we come into budget time, it was important for us to know that there, the, the options available to all of our students, that we need to know more about that. Thank you.
Dave, can you address what would happen, or what has happened, I'm assuming it may have, if you have a student who has a passion or desire to do something in this area, and you have a parent or parents who want the kid, oh, you have to go to college?
Yeah.
And how do you, how does the school help, if we do, help balance that?
Yeah, I, I think it really helps that there's a large focus with post-secondary education, and, and when you show them numbers on, you know, job placement in some of these categories, and salary, I think that that helps a little bit. But it is, the reason I, like I said, I bring this up is because in Bethlehem, we are focused on academics, and, and we have high-achieving students, which is amazing, and, and we, we always want to foster that. But, but we also, like you said, we also deal with situations where, you know, a student might be, have an interest that is a little different than traditional, and, and our counselors are great, like I said, at using statistics, showing what the options are, and, and then, you know, especially when it comes to, at this point in time, with job placement and the growth of the economy in some of those areas, it's, it's pretty easy to sell it to them after they see those stats.
If a student has a, an interest, say, to become a baker, or some sort of culinary interest, and they say, "Okay, I want to try this out," and then they try it out, and they find out it's not for them, they've decided, you know, "I really do want to be an accountant." Not that I think they'd go from one to the other, but.
Right.
For the sake of argument, do they have that opportunity, or do they lose so much time out of their other classes that it would be difficult?
No. So we, we've had that before, where students have gone, and they've decided, you know what, I tried it, which, which actually is great, because they thought they, they wanted to do something, they got a taste of it, and they decide, you know, "I, I, that's really not for me," and they get to go in a different direction. Some students have gone in different directions at Boses and taken a different program there. Other students have actually come back into our setting, and it, it happens, and we, it's pretty common in many cases where it's not such a big deal, so.
So to try it out, what you're saying is they're not analyzed?
Yeah, it's a safe thing.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you need from the district to support this program more? You know, you said that you didn't want it to be the best-kept secret anymore, so what, what, what do you see, what, what support do you need?
I scripted it for you, that's awesome. So, yeah, I, I guess my thing is, like I said in the presentation, 11th and 12th grades is when students are allowed, or, or they'll take students at, at Albany Boses. I see a lot of ninth and 10th grade students walk through our building and are just, they're not happy, their self-confidence starts to go down, they're not able to utilize some of their strengths because of the setting we, you know, because of the setting that we have here for them, just the traditional school setting. And so I guess in my mind, I always look and say, "We have these kids, I don't want to lose them between ninth and 11th grade. They're talented, they're creative, and, and what can we do in our building that will keep them around and keep them interested using their strengths until maybe we can get them to 11th grade and 12th grade over there?" So, that's a very good question. Those are, those are pieces that I would really like to look at and analyze to see, you know, what we could do within our building to try to promote some of those strengths with the students that we're seeing moving on, so we don't lose them in ninth and 10th grade.
That's great, well, thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding our agreement regarding a Clarksville Elementary School.
It seems that we have been talking about this for close to a year, and in fact, it was about a year ago that we had begun a series of community meetings and conversations to discuss the sheriff's desire at the time to acquire Clarksville Elementary. And they had been leasing the property for five years, and coming up on the end of the lease, they were interested in purchasing it through a series of conversations about what would be best relative to the county's budget, what would work for the district. We had negotiated a lease-purchase agreement that allowed for a purchase over a three-year period, and a total five-year lease-purchase deal, where we would also be receiving in-kind services, patrol services at the district. We took great pains to make sure that we would preserve the history of the building, and that we would have the building available as an occupied, vibrant component of the Clarksville community through the ongoing presence of the sheriffs. And in fact, the Board took action to approve that lease-purchase agreement back in June of 2017. However, still, to this date, the county had not actually taken action to approve that lease-purchase agreement. And therefore, the original five-year lease, in fact, has been extended into its sixth year with the district. We had, had a number of concerns raised by the county attorney's office that had been reviewing the agreement, that had been negotiated with the sheriffs, and essentially, they wanted to purchase the building upfront. They were not comfortable with the three years of lease-purchase payments, fearing that we might change our minds and pull out of the deal with them. So we had just received a letter from the county attorney in the beginning of December, where he advised us that he was not willing to approve the agreement that the Board had approved back in June, and instead wanted to make an immediate purchase. There were some questions that they had raised relative to the interpretation of education law as it related to the ability to enter into the agreement. We provided that information to them. We certainly did not have any concerns with the structure of the agreement that had been approved, but they definitively stated that they were not willing to approve that lease-purchase agreement, and they indicated that they would in fact vacate the property if the Board was not willing to reconsider and consider an outright purchase. So what we wanted to do was to get this information out to the Board and to the community, and have the opportunity to discuss this latest development from them. The property had been appraised, and based on that value, we had negotiated a price of $325,000. negotiated a price of $325,000. If we are to consider converting this from a lease purchase to a purchase agreement, one of the things that we would need to do, because more than six months have elapsed since we had that appraisal done, is we would need to update the value of that appraisal just to make sure that there hasn't been any shift in the values associated with the property. What is not changing would be the prices. The $198,000 instead of being paid over a three-year period would be paid to the district upfront upon closing. And then the in-kind services would go through June 30th, 2022. Again, the total price of 325 would not change, but it would not be a lease purchase, it would be an outright purchase.
Judy, excuse me, if, so you're saying if the appraisal doesn't, it goes up or if it goes down, the price is still going to be the same?
We would have to evaluate that information when we get the updated appraisal and then determine whether these values are still appropriate. Our obligation is to make sure-
Those numbers could change.
It's possible. I wouldn't expect that there would be a significant change, but again, I'm not an appraiser, so I would need to look at that report and make the decision at that time. So the benefits of the transfer that we had talked about when the board had approved this back in June essentially was that we would have the certainty of a willing occupant, a willing buyer for that property. The community certainly had raised concerns about having a vacant building there. There were concerns about vandalism potentially. It certainly isn't an attractive neighbor if you have a vacant building in your community. Certainly, there were many comments that were positive about the sheriff's presence in the building relative to the quick response from the emergency providers with that satellite location. The certainty that would come to the district would be removing the future costs to maintain the building. There, as part of the five-year plan, were some significant costs that we would need to incur in order to preserve the building, items related to the exterior of the building, the envelope, roofing and masonry and work of that nature. And certainly to maintain a vacant building, we would need to pay money to keep the heat at certain levels as well so that we didn't have any damage from burst pipes or things like that. The other element that was attractive relative to this proposed deal was that, to the extent that it's possible, we do like to try to work cooperatively with our fellow municipal entities. So the fact that we could preserve this community benefit and have a, a workable fair deal between the school and the county was also seen as a positive for the district and for the sheriff's office. We believe that the agreement in its form that has been proposed by the sheriffs still does make financial sense for the school district. If, in fact, the sheriffs cancel the lease, we then have an immediate loss of the rental income associated with the building. We lose the ability to have a known purchaser of the building, and we would be maintaining a vacant property. We feel that it really doesn't change the overall net impact to the district, and we have certain sunk costs associated with the building as it relates to the prior work that has been done and the debt service that is outstanding. The key piece from the district's perspective is that you avoid incurring the future costs to maintain a building, that we do not show any indication that we would need to reopen again as an elementary school. We had used the projections on enrollment that the Capitol District Regional Planning Commission had presented to the district last year. We have just received their updated report at the beginning of December, and those projections are still consistent with what they had presented to the district last year and shows continuing declines in our overall enrollment. So again, to have a separate building, even if the projections were wrong and we needed to find additional classroom space, we do have capacity within our other existing elementary schools, and it would significantly add costs to our operating budget to open up another building from both the staffing costs and from maintenance costs associated with that. I had touched on earlier some of those costs. It is close to $40,000 a year in costs that we would have to pay in order to maintain the building if it were vacant. And based on the high priority work that would need to be addressed, we could be looking at possibly an additional $500,000 in the very near term in order to preserve the exterior of the building. So not insignificant dollars. We, again, have been told by the sheriff's office that they certainly are committed to maintaining the building as a vibrant part of the Clarksville community, maintaining the playground, the sheltering, and of course, the 24/7 presence within that community. And they would very much like to stay in the building, but they are trying to honor the request of the county attorney's office, which is to essentially buy the building outright. If the board wishes to consider this, it would in fact require that a new agreement be approved by the board. There would be a similar resolution that you would need to adopt that would indicate that you do not anticipate that there would be a need to use the building for district purposes. The updated appraisal would affirm the value. And then following, if it were approved, then there would be another 60-day time period in which if there were a request for a referendum, if there were sufficient signatures on a petition that's presented to the board, then a referendum would be required at that point. The county, although the county attorney's office, if they will approve an outright purchase, procedurally, it would need to go through their public safety committee and then ultimately to their legislature as well to approve it. So that, in essence, is the situation that we are in. And wanted to open it up at this point, then, if there are any questions from the board-
Sure.
About this.
Just in terms of the information on slide seven, which you don't have to go back to, in terms of capacity, and I'm not sure if it's a fair question, if you can answer, do you know how many built, uh, classrooms could be converted now in the existing elementary schools? Should we need classroom space, roughly? Sorry. I didn't send it to you ahead of time, but I-
Maybe eight or 10. I don't know. It's the same as what we had last year.
Okay.
Actually, Elsmere probably next year would be down one section, so they would actually have capacity that they didn't have last year.
So, so in every elementary building, is there space that could be used as a classroom? Should enroll it somehow? Okay.
Correct. Right. At the time last year, Elsmere did not, but looking forward at their enrollment for next year, they would.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on slide four. You said that the in-kind patrol services would go through June 30th, 2022, which is five more years. Is that five years from the original agreement or five years from any new agreement that we would actually be signing?
They had committed to five years through 2022. Again, depending on the timing of the agreement, that date might slide. That would be something that we would need to look at with them.
Because if we're agreeing to five, five years, I wouldn't want to go back to the 2022 date, which is based on the earlier agreement.
Have we, Judy, have we received assurances that if we approve this again, that they won't come back and say, oh, no, we need to change this or whatever? I mean, basically, they had agreed to what we had voted on last year and then suddenly didn't.
The sheriff's attorneys had agreed to that and were under the belief that it would be approved by the county attorney's office as well, but ultimately that was not the case. And before this would come back to the board, we would absolutely want to have that form of the agreement agreed to by the county attorney's office so that we're not in this situation again of having to modify something that we think is wrapped up.
So you would be bringing basically a, a proposal, not even a proposal, but an agreement with all the signatures in place, and we would be just approving that?
Well, it would be an agreement that the form has been agreed to, but they wouldn't be signing off on it until the legislature had voted and then until the school board had voted to approve it.
And do you see any financial downside for us to go with an outright purchase versus the lease purchase?
I do not. It really just changes the timing of the payments that are coming to us.
And just to clarify, it doesn't affect the debt service in any way?
No.
Or the state aid, associated with the debt service?
No.
Is there, I mean, this is a time anyhow that we recognize visitors that want to comment on something on the agenda, so obviously this is on the agenda if anybody would like to comment on this or ask questions of Judy. No, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
I'm Jennifer Bull. Do we have any assurances that we would have the ability to buy back any of the property if they were going to sell it, if Albany County was deciding to sell it?
The former agreement that we had approved essentially had a right of first refusal that if the sheriffs no longer wanted to use the building, that they would approach the school first.
And does that include the property as a whole if they decide to split off six or eight acres for sale and then keep the building? Does that also include that acreage?
It should be the entire parcel, yes. And they had said that they would maintain all of the other terms and conditions within that agreement. The only thing they wanted to change was an outright purchase in year one as opposed to over three years.
I would just like to make a, tell the board, I would be more than willing to pay $325,000 to the school board if they're actually interested in selling it outright for that amount of money. Obviously, would not provide in-kind services, but you would be getting more money total on the, on the property. So if you're interested, I think there are buyers, myself included, that are interested in the property.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Abbott, and I think you know that I have been opposed to the permanent sale of Clarksville Elementary School because I do think it is a, I feel like it's a waste of taxpayer money and a poor use of district assets. I also believe the sale will result in the loss of flexibility that, for the district. I have different opinions on some of the facts you presented in the past, and I've done a lot of my own homework, as you know, in the past. I know I've written letters. I don't know if folks read them. Is this projecting okay? Now, I, I guess I have a couple of questions between the presentations from last year, if I may. Last year, you made it a point to talk about how the lump sum, rather, I'm sorry, the payments rather than the lump sum would have been better for state aid. And today, you know, regar, because if you got the lump sum, it would have a greater effect on state aid rather than spreading it out. I heard a different, totally, yep, that's in your presentation from last June. I, I heard something totally different. Today, you referred to, well, that's what you said. And you also said-
Can I clarify for you?
What's that?
Can I clarify it for you?
Sure.
So the state says that on the building aid, that they have committed to pay the district, whenever there is an actual sale of the property, the sale amount is then pulled or reduced out of your scheduled building aid. So that is still the case. When there is a sale, whatever the total sales proceeds are, would come out of the future stream of state aid. So it's a neutral impact in terms of our current financial position. So there's no change in what was the case back in June.
Okay, that means you're going to get less though. No?
It means that our aid is reduced by the amount of our sales proceeds.
So you get less building aid?
We get less building aid.
Okay, but it'd be, so by the lump sum, you get less building aid versus by spreading it out, you would have less annual impact on your budget?
The, the timing of it, we were not sure of how the state would make those reductions, but we know within the five years remaining that it would be reduced in total.
Okay, just trying to clear on that, be clear on that. I feel like the $198 that you'll get in cash is really all that you should be considering as how much you're getting for the building. Because frankly, your in-kind patrols by the sheriff's office were of duration for about a month. I think they said in the lease, just two patrols a night. And frankly, I feel like that's what our officers should be doing anyway, is giving patrols. I mean, that's what they do. They drive around. That's what the Albany, my Albany County taxes to the sheriff pay for patrols. So I would just like to ask you guys not to even consider the $127,000 as income to the district, because frankly, it's not. The only money you're getting is $198,000. Another point I had is, another thing you had said before, and I wanted to understand how the payments provided the opportunity for the reserve to be adjusted based on a difference between the lease and offset for building aid. Now you're going to lose that opportunity, right? You'll just have that lump amount, and you won't have that ability to adjust the reserve if you have to, you know, pull more money. Don't put away as much money. I mean, you, last, let's be frank, the last several years, been running about $2 million budget excess every year. So I don't feel like you guys are low on cash to do the $30,000, $40,000 mothball approach to allow for future growth or future, you know, I do feel like the loss of the school building, which is 11 classrooms and 12 and a half acres outright, without even holding on to six acres is really short-sighted, at least some sort of acreage for the school for the future. I really think that that's short-sighted. And the building, honestly, you could be using it for your, your own STEM programs or your own, or tech programs or as a language arts or Montessori or MAG. There's other things that I hear our school always trying to improve ourselves, but we're cutting our nose despite our face because we're losing 11 classrooms and 12 and a half acres that you could be using. So- And I don't know that my town is even here. They haven't really been here, unfortunately. Maybe your solar plan has something to do with it. And then I just want to mention that I really, I really suspect, I already know the outcome, you've already voted on it once, you temporarily closed it in 2010. But, you know, if you're guys are going to leave our community behind, always make sure, I don't know how to get this to future, you know, we always have, we can have new superintendents and new boards, but we have to make sure our, our climate is considered. It's a different climate up on the hill. We have, then down here in Delmar, we have to make sure our busing times are not, you know, unequal, unequally long. And I would really like to see that the school district at least retains six acres because land is expensive. I really think you're going to see a lot more development than what your presentation showed last year. You've got the Klinkies now talking about selling off. John Mead has the biggest amount of land in the town of Bethlehem, right here on Mead's Lane, just past the YMCA. You know, it's not advantageous anymore to deduct your tax, your, your property taxes from your, from your income tax. So I would like to really see that you think about holding on to some land so that if you need to build a new school, it's in Clarksville because we have been not, we haven't, we're having our backs, the school district is turning our backs to our elementary children. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments? Okay, and any other questions from the board?
Is there any reason why we are not, since the, since the county has basically opened it up again, is there any reason why we're not putting this out to the- it up again, is there any reason why we're not putting this out to the community to a realtor to see if there are other people that want to buy it, maybe for a better price?
I don't know what the process is for that.
I don't know what the process is either, but I think it's worth asking. This is the second time we've had a member from the community, it is the same member, I understand, who's said that she would be willing to buy it. I don't know if she'd be willing to buy it for a higher price. I don't know if it is a piece of property that is worth more on the open market, but it seems that this has been a, we've had someone in the building who's leased it, they've been a good tenant from all reports, and they asked if they could buy it. And I don't know that we've really done anything more, because I don't think we thought that we could get anything more. But the question now is, you know, they've opened it up again, maybe we should look again.
We could check into it and see what's involved. I don't know what's allowed to be used for that property, but certainly something we want to...
Which also is a concern, because if you have to go through zoning, there could be extensive costs. But it might be something we should consider.
Well, also, it seems like the new assessment or appraisal would give us more information and then go from there.
Right. Because we have to, if the board wants us to go ahead and explore this, we need to get the new appraisal regardless.
Either way, we have to get an appraisal, so I would ask that we get the appraisal, and when that comes back, the board revisit what we do.
Sure. And I could get more information about the process for listing it and what that would mean in terms of timeline and, you know, other fees that might be associated with that.
Thank you.
Wouldn't hurt to have the information, you know, whether we end up deciding to pursue that or not, but it might be helpful.
Sure.
Anything else?
If you don't mind, chalk it up to my core, I can't read anymore on this little screen anyway, but I also wanted to mention that I would rather see a community vote on even selling the school. Honestly, you had, this vote went down last spring, three to two. That certainly doesn't represent our entire school district, and I don't know that there's a lot of awareness and participation anyway. And the other thing I did, I'm glad I didn't see on your talking point, but I'd seen it in the news article that kind of bothered me, was that there was a statement by Bethany Bump from the Times-Junors, that the county had indicated that county services might be moved there. You know, I just want to remind the school, if you're thinking of that as being a perk, when I talked to county spokespeople last spring, they told me they had no intention of moving satellite county services, like social services, to Clarksville. They said the need is actually much further out. They ran a demonstration project there, they didn't have anyone come, so it wasn't any, so I was a little, I'm happy it wasn't in your presentation today, it was in the June presentation, and I, that was not a confirmed benefit to the community.
Okay, the vote was four to two.
I'm sorry?
Vote was four to two. We had one, we had one abstention.
Because Joey's a member of the county.
Position of the county. So it's four to two. Just clarification. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, is there anyone who would like to speak on some other part of the agenda? Okay, next, the finance items. It's recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following finance action, item one. So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the professional personnel items. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 14. So moved.
Second.
Any, any comments or discussion?
Just, I'm trying to do quick math, and I'm not quick enough. There's a significant number of years of service with the retirements, and I just want to recognize the contribution of those teachers who are retiring after many years. And also, not as many years, but it's just a significant number of our years given to the district.
I agree. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the support personnel items. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, a longtime employee, I think, believe, out of Transportation and Food Services, just to recognize their service.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. The other action items. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to thank Lynn for serving on, our representative on the Bozzi's Board.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Lynn, I just have a question. For you to serve on the Board, on the Bozzi's Board, you don't need to be a member of the school board, is that correct?
No, you don't need to be.
Okay.
But you need to be nominated by a board within the capital region Bozzi's area.
Okay. Thank you.
Recognition of visitors. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the board on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, future meetings. Next Wednesday, January 10th, the Board of Education is having a retreat here at 5:30. Again, this is permissible on the open meeting slot, and no decisions are made during that time. And the next meeting is Wednesday, January 17th, at Hammergrail Elementary School, and then Wednesday, February 7th, back here at the high school. I don't see any need for returning to executive sessions, so could I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.